The gas bill. Yeah, she was mean. Yeah. I know. Forget it. Forget it. Tomorrow, more snow. It works. It's so hard to... You know, she's already... She already went back to work last week. And I'm like, how do you make appointments? How do you make it work?
Yeah.
Things get...
Well, now, we have... We have the windows that may be...
Yeah.
...
Normally, that would be when I was up there. They have lizards and several snowstorms. You know, the plows come on and they keep the roads pretty, you know, good. But then all have those banks of snow that are behind your driveway. And you have to get out.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. It's serene.
So, it's a lot of work. It's not something I'd want to deal with.
Oh, yeah? Maybe.
Has everything with you?
He's home. He's keeping up with the child thing and helping the families and that.
So many different benefits. It's been amazing.
It's awesome.
Yeah.
Really happy.
I know. See, everybody wanting to do more and more and more. And it's great.
Are we missing anything? Bless everybody.
I now call order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, February 17th, 2015, at 6:30. Roll call.
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Larson.
Here.
Mr. Terrapini.
Here.
Mr. Banther.
Here.
Mr. Seber.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Melody. Kid, will everyone stand? Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance following.
Tonight, oh God, we come before you thanking you for the refreshment and nourishment of the rain this evening. We ask, oh God, that you be with the commissioners, the leaders of our city this evening, that you will give them discernment and grace in all that they say and do, and may it be to promote unity and peace to all. This day I pray. Amen.
I thank the Lord, the Lord, the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. We would now go to our public comments on any item that would not be discussed this evening. Go forward, please. State your name, address for the record. You've given up to four minutes.
Joel Raca. I'm not here as my community spokesman. I'm here as a taxpaying resident. And I'm really here to clarify a point or two if I can. First of all, good evening to all of you. You might recall that I posed a few questions to the commissioners at the January 27th meeting, expressing appreciation for any answers or opinions from you. And to date, no one has responded. However, I did receive calls from nine employees on the Sunday following the meeting and the next Sunday, two different Sundays. And I don't know why it was Sundays. A few of the callers, and this is what I want to clear up, a few of the callers thought I was a union rep or pro-laborer. And for the record, I'm neither. I've been a management representative since 1949 and as a professional management rep since 1955. That said, I never considered myself pro-management either. That's ironic, I suppose, but my professional reputation was pro-industry with an emphasis... with an emphasis on a level playing field. At the outset of my career, I worked for one and a half years trying to instill the three-legged steel concept, that is, each of the legs being management, labor, and the customer, and the seat depending on the three-legs... three legs being the construction industry in my case. I succeeded 1971 by founding a labor management organization under the recently enacted Labor Management Cooperation Act, the first group to do so and continues to flourish this very day. And so, for the three-legged stool, it can be easily adopted. In Tarpon Springs, it would be labor, management, and the taxpayers, and the taxpayers, as the legs and the city government be in the seat. And the objective of each of the legs is to perform honestly and with dedication lest any of the legs fail for non-performance, thereby tilting the seat and creating problems for the seat, which we would call the city government. And back to the nine calls. I learn more about what is going on in this city government than I have during the 26 years I've been the wood spokesman and city activist. It's sort of left me with a feeling that I've been humored by a facade all these years. And if that is true, I'm sadly disappointed. And to finalize, incidentally, I don't suffer from the Brian Williams syndrome. My claims are well documented, published, or videoed. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Good evening. Since you guys know who I am, I'm not going to rehash previous.
You can still state your name, address.
I'm sorry. David Lob, 504 Wideview Avenue. Since everybody knows why we've been coming here, we have some new information we'd like to present to the commission. It was stated before by your city manager that this ordinance from 1990 is the law, and he was quite adamant about that. And since the city only goes back 10 years in your resources, the records department couldn't help us out with what we were looking for, so we had to go to a different arena. And so, through our research, we have now found several homes, not one, several homes that have been built after 1990 on the same street of Wideview Avenue that were not required to improve the road in front of their home. Now, it's not once or twice. This is several houses. So, that's selective enforcement. And unfortunately, now, the city's asking us to be selected to be the ones to bear financial burden to improve this section of roadway. Now, we were told we'd be communicated with, and we have not to date for the last three weeks. We've tried to work this out amicably, but to no avail. So, since we now have evidence that shows that this ordinance has not been enforced by the city itself, if there can't be some type of a resolution for us to work out, then we have no choice but to go to the next level, since we can now prove there have been homes built after 90, 1990, and they were not required to improve the road. So, all we can do is leave this now with you guys. You're the powers-to-be to communicate back with us for a resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we go to our regular agenda presentation, general fund budget update.
Good evening. Ron Herring, Finance Director. We have the first quarter update of the general fund unassigned fund balance as of December 31st, 2014. The first slide has the unassigned fund balance as of September 2014. 2008 through 2013 were the final audited numbers. 2014 and 2015 were projections that were done back in September 2014. My next slide has the unassigned fund balance as of December 31st, 2014. 2008 through 2013 are the same final numbers, but 2014 is the unaudited final number that we have right now of a decrease of 305,351. I say unaudited because our auditors are... they're here right now, still working, but they're going to wrap up pretty soon. And 2015 is a new projection for 2015 of a decrease of 121,694. My next slide details the unassigned fund balance for 2015. It begins with the 8,872,797 at the end of 2014. I looked at revenue projections, trying to see anything for the year based on budget, the actual that might be coming in higher or lower during the year, like electric, utility tax, 46,000, franchise fee electric, 23,000. Communication service tax seems to be the only one in the last couple of years that seems to be going down. It looks like about 65,000 for total revenue adjustments of $4,212. And the only thing expenditure-wise is some additional salary and benefit increases of 125,906, giving that decrease of 121,694 that was on the previous slide, leaving a projected unassigned fund balance for fiscal year 2015 of 8,751,103. And that's all the slides I have, so it's in the presentation. It's nice and short, but I'll open for any questions.
Well, I just thank you for this. I think we're headed in the right direction, and hopefully, the economy will continue to work with us in terms of reducing... or at least increasing our fund balance and reducing our reliance on it. So, with that, Mr. Terrapini?
Thank you. Mr. Herring, for the... on the last slide, the increase of 125,000 and change for new hire or for additional salary and benefits?
Yes.
Is that in relation to the new hires for the water treatment facility?
No, that's in the... that's in the water and sewer fund. This is just the general fund.
This is mainly, as you know, we settled two contracts. One contract was from last year also. So, where it was accounted for is the... where the salary is what we projected and where they ended up now with the settling of the two contracts. That's where you get that money there from.
This is also the general employees also.
Yes.
Sorry. I mean, the... Fire is over. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Banther?
Thank you. And I greatly appreciate having this information and hope... although I'm hoping we can get this quarterly, so we don't have any... not surprises in a bad way, but that way, come, you know, come when we do our budget workshops, we have a grasp of what's happened. So, right now, as it looks, does it think that for this fiscal year from the... from the reserves, and I realize that it's a constant moving target, we will use about 121, you know, $1,000?
Yes. And like I want to say, that's a projection right now. We're only three months into the year, so I'm just trying to give my best projection right now.
Well, that's... you know, it's definitely headed in the right direction. Obviously, from your slide, 2013, we took the big hit. And thankfully, in 2014, there was unaudited... I'm sure it's correct. We greatly reversed that and hoping we can get to where our budgeting is... though is... though is based off our revenues and not our savings account, because at least... at least about half of this... about half of this balance, we have to keep in there by charter or by state law, right, Mark?
20%.
Yeah, 20%. So, I'm very pleased with the... with this direction. I think that goes to say a lot to those... to Mark and staff for cuts that they've made in expenses and also a lot to our economic growth, because like I've said last summer and in the fall, I don't think we'll cut our way out of this problem. We're going to have to grow our way out of this problem with growing our tax base and revenues, and I think we're headed in that right direction, so thank you.
And if you look on there, remember, on the first page was the projection. Obviously, we got to wait till December because all the figures have to come, but you see, we came in half of the projection.
Exactly.
So, the big thing, the 305 from what we projected, 651, theoretically, you know, even if we had a consistent 121,000 for all three quarters in the hole, we would come about right at our projection. We are hoping that doesn't happen in the next three quarters and stuff.
It's just very encouraging, you know. When I campaigned for this office by numerous outlets and people, I was called crazy for saying the unassigned fund balance was dropping. And sadly, I was correct, but I'm glad to see that it's... that drop is stopping. And I think that that's the important spot, and I was very grateful for staff and this board for how we've helped manage that. So, thank you.
And these will be quarterly. So, we'll be seeing... you'll have half the year in our next report. And then, as we enter the budget season, hopefully, right as winter, the budget season, you'll have half of the year, and then in the middle, towards the middle part of... a little more past the middle of budget process, then you'll have the three quarters. So, you'll have that all to work with in the budget time to see if this consistent over the first quarter is going. Obviously, we've... although seen... we know we had good gas prices up in December, and now we see where they've gone up in January. So, you know, you may see some of that fluctuation.
It's a moving number and target. I understand that.
But yes, these will come every... when... and it usually takes three weeks to a month after the point for him to bring... but as soon as he has that information report, then the next quarter will come up, which is half the year. And we'll continue that as a process, you know, along the budget year.
Right. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I really don't have any questions at this time. I want to express my appreciation, first of all, to Commissioner Banther for requesting that we get these updates on a quarterly basis. I think that's important. And I'd also like to express my appreciation, Mr. Herring, for the report, as well as to city staff and our city manager, Mr. LaCorus. I think the numbers look good. I'm not... what we're looking at here is an improvement now from the previous report, and I think that's important for us to recognize. Thank you.
Any public comments on this item? Seeing none? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we go to our consistent agenda. That's a regular session of minutes for December 16th, January 13th, January 27th, and February 3rd. Next, satisfaction and release of liens, attorney fees, trash, mess, date on... LLP invoice number 47870, Seismont Thomas, Seismore, Gonzalez, and Haring, LLP invoice 78486 and 78548, Zenzel Law, invoice 13854. Special events, plant sale, garden club, March 21st, Easter extravaganza, Recreation Department, that's March 28th, Fine Arts Festival, Chamber of Commerce, and that's March 28th through the 29th. Six is increased contract number 140042-B-CM, Furnish and Install Fuel, Island Canopy. Seven is increased file number 140092-S-JJ Tipperary Planting Services. Eight is award bid number 150019-B-CM, roadway and parking lot paving and micro surfacing. Nine is award file number 150075-C-JJ Playground Equipment through the U.S. Communities Purchasing Alliance Master Agreement number 110179. Are there any items anyone would like to...
Number eight, just for discussion.
Just want to talk about it?
That's right.
Also, number four.
And number four? We can start with number eight if you want to.
Okay. Thank you. So, on number eight, if you look at the backup on line item number five, there's an asterisk that says this work has already been completed for this location, which will be deleted from the contract. So, my question is, has... because the work has already been done, has that figure been computed and already been deleted to reflect the number in this bid? Mr. LaCorus?
I'm...
You with me?
Yeah.
And then also, while you're looking, it could be my imagination, but did we not already resurface and restripe the Marina parking lot?
I'm not sure right offhand on any of those, but we'll check if they are to subtract them and stuff, but I don't know if it's a different paving on the other one.
I mean, I don't have an issue to approve it one way or another. I'm just curious on whether or not, since the work has already been completed, if that's reflective in this $218,000, or if that's going to come out at a later date? Just looking for some clarification there.
Yeah.
Because if it's already been deleted and it's taken out from the number that we see, then why is it even there?
Yeah. If you can prove that... if you can prove a contingent, I get back to you that information. It'll be deleted out, but I don't have the answer for you right now.
Okay. And then also, if you look at the Marina parking lot?
Yep. Both of those.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. In regards to agenda item number four, which is our attorney fees, when I looked at the first couple of pages, there's an item listed as miscellaneous work on which a file will not be opened. I think this came up previously, and I know I examine these bills, as I'm sure the rest of my board does, and I'm sure city staff does as well, but I examine them to make sure that items that should be covered by the retainer are covered by the retainer, and other items that are billable certainly need to be billable. And my question is, I'm not sure how to interpret miscellaneous work on which a file will not be opened. I'm not sure how to interpret that when I try to examine whether or not that's something that should be covered by the retainer or that... or if that's something that should be billable.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Those items under that heading are items that are separately billable, but on which our system is... or which I am not opening a separate file within our system. I think we went through this about a month ago or so, and I may have not been responsive to your question, but our system was getting burdened by the number of and the volume of additionally billable files. And so, we were opening a new file every time there was something separately billable under the retainer, but then we'd open it, you know, bill it to at one time for one minute, and then we'd never bill to it again, so it was burdening our system. So, I made a kind of a catch-all for items that were billable outside the retainer, but I didn't open a separate file in order to efficient... to give more efficiency to our systems within the firm. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying. The total for that category was $766, which on the surface, I guess, isn't a particularly large sum of money, but if we have that sum of money on multiple invoices, that actually does end up being a large sum. I'm not sure that I'm comfortable having a category on the invoice that we're not able to categorize.
Oh, absolutely. And at your leisure, it's your direction. I'm happy to... I'm happy to continue to do it, just again, I will need to make it more efficient somehow. For example, that entry... those entries on that, that is a case that one of our city employees is a critical witness on, but we are not party to the suit. So, we're going to do some litigation activities related to the suit.
So, it would fall under the category of litigation, which is clearly billable.
Right. That's what I mean. So, I think that will be the end of it. So, I'll never bill to the file again. If I were to open a new file, again, I'm burdening my system a little bit in-house. I'll bill to it three or four times like I have here, and then I'll never bill to it again, but it's still within my system, taking up space in my memory. It's a little bit of a problem, and we are in the process internally of increasing our own capacity, and so this is not the city's problem. It's ours internally, because we've got 45... we've got a lot of history with Tarpon Springs and with some of our other cities where it's burdening our system. It's a technology problem, really.
So, maybe just a caveat in there, saying this little get to let them know when they review it, what that is on...
Okay. Yeah. We did get a... we did get an inquiry from a staff member this week about can we line item it, so it's more identifiable. We are working on that, see what our system will do.
I feel like we on this board, we're charged with overseeing the taxpayer dollars and making sure that we're not overspending in situations where maybe something should be covered. It sounds to me like what you're describing should certainly be not covered, that we have to pay for it. And I understand that, but I would like to have a better understanding when we look at the invoice.
Absolutely. And I will try to work with our system as we upgrade them to see if I can make them more efficient and more clear to you folks. The subcategories, for example, where it says Mets Real Estate and More Litigation, you know, those services by themselves are outside the retainer, so that's some identifier, but if I can make it more efficient and more clear for you folks, I will do that moving forward. We're in about a six to eight-week process right now of redoing some of our own internal systems.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Shall we entertain a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
Any public comments on any of these items? Roll call.
Mr. Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Next, we go to orders and resolutions. Item number 10, ordinance 2015-06, application 14-40, Stamos vacation right-of-way first reading. This is quasi-judicial.
Mr. Mayor, before we go there, did you want to... we have items 12, 13, and 14 that have been requested with the applicant's request.
Okay. Then, I'll just announce anybody that might be here for item 12, 13, and 14. Those items are going to be deferred until March 3rd per the applicant's request. Anybody that might be here for those items, so 12, 13, and 14. Item number 10.
Ordinance 2015-06, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, vacating and abandoning right-of-way for Bayou Boulevard from North Spring Boulevard to Lake Boulevard, and Lake Boulevard from Pappas Avenue to Tarpon Bayou, providing for conditions, providing for findings, providing for future easements, providing for recordation of the public records of Pinellas County, and providing an effective date. So, first reading of ordinance 2015-06 by title only. Second reading will be held on March 17, 2015, and will be published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on March 6, 2015. This proceeding is quasi-judicial, where the commission acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At such a hearing, it is not the commission's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the commissioners are required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the city's code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application. The commission may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If that evidence demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established by the code, then the commission is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria, then the commission is required by law to find against the applicant. There is an established procedure to be followed at this quasi-judicial hearing. All witnesses must give their testimony under oath. All persons testifying must give their name and address for the record. All testimony and questioning of this hearing must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration. The staff will present its testimony and evidence first. The applicant will then have an opportunity to cross-examine city staff. The applicant will then present its testimony to witnesses. City staff will have the opportunity to cross-examine the applicant's witnesses. Members of the public opposing the application will be given an opportunity to present testimony. After all members of the public speaking in opposition to the application have been heard, members of the public in support will have an opportunity to present testimony. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes. The applicant will then have an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary, after which city staff will be given the opportunity to make a closing argument or summary. Following this, the commission will consider the matter. Commissioners may ask questions of witnesses. A motion will be made, and a vote will be taken. At this time, I'd ask for the commission to disclose and exportate communications on this application.
I talked to Mr. Stamos. I told him that anything we talked about still would have to be dealt with at this meeting.
I also met with Mr. Stamos.
Me as well.
I did as well.
I spoke with Mr. Stamos over the phone.
Okay. I'll ask you all collectively then if those communications will impair your ability to consider fair and impartially this application.
No, sir.
Moving on. And ask for all witnesses to be heard tonight to please stand and be sworn. Raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Dave? Staff?
Mayor Archie is a member of the commission. My name is Dave Healy with Calvin Giordano and Associates. Our offices are at 13535 Feather Sound Drive in Clearwater, and I'm here on behalf of your Planning and Zoning Division to share with you our staff report on the requested vacation. The city attorney has identified the location. The request does request the vacation of the right-of-way of both Lake Boulevard and Bayou Boulevard as described. It's a joint application by the Stamos Family Partnership and Sebot Incorporated through George Stamos and Carol Martin, respectively. What I'd like to do, if the commission would indulge me, is to give you, first of all, an overview of the application and the staff report in terms of its content and organization, touch on the composition, really, of the staff report, so you see it in its entirety in terms of what's there, and then can, of course, ask any questions you have about those individual component parts, but then come back and break it down in terms of the background information, the review of the code and plan provisions, the staff recommendations specifically, and the other parts of the materials that are included in the staff report. Very simply, the staff report is organized essentially in three or four main parts. First of all, there is a description of the background of the application by the... Raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Dave? Staff?
Mayor Archie is a member of the commission. My name is Dave Healy with Calvin Giordano and Associates. Our offices are at 13535 Feather Sound Drive in Clearwater, and I'm here on behalf of your Planning and Zoning Division to share with you our staff report on the requested vacation. The city attorney has identified the location. The request does request the vacation of the right-of-way of both Lake Boulevard and Bayou Boulevard as described. It's a joint application by the Stamos Family Partnership and Seibot Incorporated through George Stamos and Carol Martin, respectively. What I'd like to do, if the commission would indulge me, is to give you, first of all, an overview of the application and the staff report in terms of its content and organization, touch on the composition, really, of the staff report, so you see it in its entirety in terms of what's there, and then can, of course, ask any questions you have about those individual component parts, but then come back and break it down in terms of the background information, the review of the code and plan provisions, the staff recommendations specifically, and the other parts of the materials that are included in the staff report. Very simply, the staff report is organized essentially in three or four main parts. First of all, there is a description of the background, the application by the applicants, and their reasoning for the request. We cite the applicable comprehensive plan and land development code provisions that staff determined apply to this or any application for vacation of rights-of-way. There's a staff summary and recommendation of our findings that we offer to you, submit to you, and importantly, there's a series of exhibits that I've hoped you've had a chance to look at, and I'll dwell on those or list those just for a moment. The first is the ordinance, 25, 2015-06, that the city attorney referred to, and I wanted to point out that we drafted that ordinance to comport with the request by the applicant. So we have presumed that the application is complete and eligible for your approval, and that the only fair way to present it, even though we've made an alternate recommendation, is to present the ordinance as the applicant has requested. Secondly, the application itself and the supporting materials that Mr. Stamos has provided, including some photographs and accompanying information. There are the technical review committee minutes of the two meetings at which it was considered. There's a couple of maps on the utilities location. We've worked with your Public Services Department in terms of locating the water and sewer lines that are in those right-of-ways, and suggested in the staff report how to deal with those. We've identified a graphic that's attachment, or exhibit five, the alternate staff recommendation to try and illustrate what it is that staff would put forward for your consideration. And lastly, the calculation of the application fees based on what we understand to be the formula in the code. We've had some considerable discussion right up until today with Mr. Stamos about how that works and whether it's right or not, and we can talk a little more in detail about that with you as we get to that particular point. Let me kind of start at the end and cut to the chase and tell you that our summary recommendation based on the findings that we've compiled in the staff report is that we would recommend, first and foremost, that the application as submitted be denied, but find that it does have considerable merit in part, and have offered or described an alternative recommendation that we think speaks to legitimate objectives of both the applicant's and the city's interest in preserving right-of-way access to the shoreline. That's the sum and substance of what we've concluded, but let me explain in a little more depth how we got there. First of all, the applicant has described the reasoning for their application, and essentially it is to utilize the area within the right-of-way for increased utilization of their properties. It makes sense, they own property on either side of that right-of-way, and it's both practical and, I think, a reasonable expectation that they would look to join their properties in a way that would make it more usable. They do cite in their request, in particular, their reasoning and finding that it does not need to be reserved for public access based in part on the relationship to the adjoining uses that are there, and in part on a stand of mangroves that are at the west end of Lake Boulevard in particular. They have included the letters of no objection from the utility providers, and we describe in detail the existing city utilities that are in the rights-of-way that will either be relocated, in the case of the water line terminated at the north end of the Yacht Club property, and what happens with the sewer line then that serves only the Yacht Club property. We've carefully reviewed the applicant's request. We've talked to Mr. Stamos a number of times. I've dealt with George many years. He's always very reasonable and professional. We do have a difference of opinion about whether his request meets the letter of the code requirements. We did visit the site together, and we appreciate the opportunity to do that. The main things that we have looked at with respect to our finding, our first starts on page three of the staff report, with respect to the comprehensive plan, there are a number of policies in your comprehensive plan that speak to the issue of vacating rights-of-way. I won't read all of those things to you, but I want to make sure they're referenced in the record. First of all, in your Recreation and Open Space Plan, it talks specifically and lists in a table that I've attached, a series of rights-of-way that terminate at the shoreline that have particular value to the city for access or vista purposes, and speaks to the intent to preserve those for public interest purposes. It does state in that language that references those tables, I think there's some 23 separate rights-of-way that are listed, Lake Boulevard in particular is listed, that at some previous point in time, I guess when the plan was written, that it was the intent for staff to review each of those and study them and make some evaluation about their relative significance and importance in being preserved. My understanding is that has not been done, and I know that's of concern to Mr. Stamos. My perspective on that would be that it's practical and certainly more efficient and more cost-effective to look at each one of these based on the specific circumstances that surround it, and this is a good case in point. We wouldn't understand necessarily all of the reasons and legitimate reasons to vacate portions of the right-of-way, or any option perhaps for preserving some part of it, without looking at each one in considerable detail and understanding the adjoining owner's interest in each. There is language also in your conservation and coastal management element that speaks to the same policy about preserving public rights-of-way that terminate at the shoreline and the importance of doing so. More specifically, in your land development code, zoning and land development code, and I'll refer specifically to section 216, vacation of streets, plats, or other property, and the standards for their review, and they're listed on page four of the staff report. Simply said, there's four criteria that are required to be looked at and evaluated, and that's what we've tried to do as your staff, to put forward our best thinking, if you will, on those four criteria. And in fact, the applicants meet three of the four, without any question. First speaks to the utilities that are in the right-of-way and their ability to either be accommodated in some other fashion, that the property does not provide the sole means of access to the adjoining property, it does not, that the property is not needed to implement the future circulation plan of the traffic circulation element, and neither of these rights-of-way are identified in your traffic circulation element, and so the application would meet those criteria. The one that is troubling to staff and that we find is not met is that the property, it says, does not provide the adjoining neighborhood with a viable, usable access or vista to the city's shoreline. And the underlying, the emphasis, is my addition, it's not underlined in the code. We find that, in fact, both of these public rights-of-way could provide viable access and/or a vista to the shoreline, and on those grounds would suggest that the rights-of-way in their entirety not be vacated. Having said that, we certainly understand the practicality of joining property on either side of a public right-of-way that's in common in same ownership, and their need and desire to use that productively for their respective business purposes and interests. And so we've suggested, at least for your consideration, an alternative that would, in fact, vacate virtually all of Lake Boulevard and most of Bayou Boulevard, save for a 40-foot section, with reserving or dedicating to public right-of-way the southerly portion of the Stamos Partnership, Family Partnership property on those two lots, I believe it's lots six and 12, that would provide an alternative comparable 40-foot right-of-way from Pampas to the shoreline, reserving that segment of Bayou that it crosses, so that it does provide access to the shoreline. And I guess in simplest terms, we thought that that would both serve substantially the interest and requests of the applicant while still preserving, for the public interest, the opportunity to establish access or vista to that shoreline on Tarpon Bayou. We feel that that would be in a location that is very accessible, certainly from Pampas and the surrounding neighborhood. It is essentially at the end of High Street, and the surrounding neighborhood on Valencia and Canal can easily access that, where the city to install some kind of a simple trail, perhaps a kayak or canoe launch there at the shoreline adjacent to the Yacht Club property. It's a very attractive location from the shoreline. We've included some pictures in our exhibit five that attach actual pictures taken from the waterside that show that location. Lastly, I would point out that we have attempted to compute the fees that would be part of the application fee, both relative to the vacation as requested, and then if the alternative were to be considered. And that is based on the calculation shown in the code of section 216-F, which tells us how to calculate that fee, to the extent that it's clear. We all wrestled with the specific language in the code about exactly how to do that, but I think in conjunction with your staff, I've worked on this and think it's a fair representation of what the code says. And as indicated, the combined fee for the vacation of those two rights-of-way by the separate parties, and it's shown separately for each party, would be about $159,500, if in fact...
Say that figure again, please, I'm sorry.
Certainly. $159,558. $158.
Thank you.
And it's based on separate valuation attached to the adjoining property for the two separate applicants, and the number is different for those two properties. If, on the other hand, the alternative recommendation were to be considered positively by the commission, it would reduce the amount to be paid, the application fee, by the Stamos Family Partnership by reflecting the 40 feet that would be newly dedicated property, and reduce the total net due to $120,594, assuming these numbers are correct. With that, I'll be glad to try and answer any questions. I know you want to hear from the applicant, and if there's anything further I can add at this time, be glad to try and do it.
We can ask questions now?
Sure. Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Healy, thanks for your help with the city while we try and restaff and look to the future, but I appreciate you being here and thanks for your report. One of the biggest things that I find of interest within the staff report, and something that I'll base my decision off of tonight, is the fact that, does the property provide the neighborhood with viable access to the water? So I guess my question becomes how you define the neighborhood?
Mm-hmm.
And what is the demographic of, or not the demographic, but the geographical, like a square mile of that neighborhood? Because as I look to that neighborhood and I look in this area, I mean Craig Park is a stone's throw, there's another viable access off of Chesapeake, which is a stone's throw, there's another viable access to the Tarpon Bayou via Ennis Drive, which is a stone's throw. So that's kind of what I'm getting at, is how do you define this particular neighborhood?
Let me say, first of all, Commissioner, there isn't a definition in your code to go by the letter. Typically, a neighborhood park or facility is going to be described as an area within about a half a mile walking distance of those adjoining residences or businesses that could reasonably access it on foot and do so in a reasonable fashion. So typical radius of anywhere between a quarter of a mile and a half mile. And we looked at, I've attached, two exhibit five, both the aerial photograph and the parcel map that does show the surrounding property, and recognize, of course, the appropriate comments that you have made, but North Spring Boulevard, High Street, over to Canal Street are all within a reasonable walking distance of the site. Certainly, up north and south on Pampas would provide direct public access to this connection to the shoreline, a fairly short distance from that public street to the shoreline. It isn't as though someone would have to traverse a long distance to get there to launch a canoe or just to walk and enjoy the view.
So was there any consideration given to some of those other public right-of-ways that did end into the water, better within a half a mile of this?
Well, consideration, yes, and recognizing they're there, and that's certainly legitimate to do so. It doesn't tell us that because there are other alternatives or other points of access that this one is more or less important. It seems to give equal weight to any point of access to the shoreline that would provide, again, access or opportunity for vista. And that's important to point out. You know, the language in the code, specifically section 216, defers that ultimate judgment to the commission for that very reason. It's certainly within your authority to come to a different conclusion than I did, we did as your staff, that it doesn't meet that test for the reasons you point out or others that the other commissioners may have. So I want to be sure to be fair in that regard, that our staff analysis and finding is that this would be important to preserve, given that there's an opportunity to do so, and still give to the applicant the vast majority of what they seek to achieve.
Sure, and I appreciate that. And I think it's open for interpretation, but I feel like that's the biggest sticky point that you included in your staff report, is that for the review criteria, that that was the number one, that it provides access for the neighborhood and the vista. And for me, it's defining the neighborhood and what the other alternatives are for that neighborhood to have open space and vistas, and which I think that there are many. Just for the record, could you reiterate the figure that if we were to approve this application tonight, not using the alternative, but approve what's been requested by the applicant, there would be a fee of $160,000?
Yes, the way it breaks down, based on the some 21,549 square feet being vacated in favor of the Stamos Family Partnership, their portion of that would be $69,495, and the portion of the right-of-way vacated in favor of Seibot or the Yacht Club would be $90,063 in some sense, based on a higher valuation of the Yacht Club property.
Thank you. And, Mr. Attorney, those monies could be utilized, would they go to our land conservation fund? Or how could we utilize those monies?
Those monies, by your ordinance, are segregated to a segregated account, utilized solely for the purpose of acquisition of future rights-of-way.
For future rights-of-way?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, because we are throwing around $120,000, $159,000, that's for the present application, and then you said 120,000, is if we chose to go to the alternative application?
Yes, sir.
And what's the, I don't know if you know, about what's on our desk now, that's talking about calculations?
He's talking about when the applicant makes his report, he's got another view that he brought forward to us today about how that's figured. Tell him that that's another thing the commission has to look at, because it's not clear, and that's what he's talking about, they've got that memo of the consideration of what those costs are.
Yeah, there's, the way the staff has looked at it, and apparently in the past, and based, in order to calculate these numbers, is based on the Pinellas County property appraisers' assessed valuation for the immediately adjoining property of the applicant. The applicant has pointed out to staff that there would be another way to look at that, because you'll notice the per-square-foot value of the Yacht Club property is identified is much higher because of the facilities that are there, the buildings in addition to the land, and an alternative way of looking at it would be just trying to determine the underlying land value alone, absent any improvements, and ascribe that land value as the basis for calculating the application fee.
So, just for clarification, what we have here, when the applicant has a chance to talk, he probably will talk in terms of these figures here?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Something less, I'm sure. I said George is always good to deal with, doesn't mean he's always right.
I don't think anybody could be always right. But one of the things that you talked about, and I still, you talked about the intent was to review all of the properties at some point in time, to determine whether they should be on the list, off the list, that the general consensus? That's why, and I wrote that down, we say the intent was to review all properties.
It indicates that in your comprehensive plan, when it lists those 23 rights-of-way in the table, it suggested that at some point, staff would look at them all, make some kind of an evaluation about their relative importance to retain as rights-of-way or not, and that certainly can be done. I don't think the fact that that hasn't been done in any way precludes you making a determination on the case that's been brought to you. You know, your... You know, you're looking at the merits of this specific situation. And my point in discussing that with staff was, it's awfully hard in the abstract. We could go out and map each one and evaluate where it comes from and goes to and what its potential is, but until you know the details, does somebody want to have it vacated? What do they propose to use it for? How does it play into their business plan? How does it affect the neighborhood? Those are things that frankly are more practical and efficient to deal with on a case-by-case basis.
And my thought is, just in asking, in terms of, as we look at doing any type of due diligence up here, is that I could assume the intent was that at some point, some of the properties that was listed might not be as viable as far as to have on the list, to take off of the list for various reasons, as to the thought that they should be reviewed. And the other question, I don't know whether you have it, is if now is the time to do any type of review, and I hear you, and to me, your quote-unquote professional opinion is that it's, it might not should read that way, it should maybe read that, you know, you would look at each and every one of individuals, but that's not exactly what it says. It said that all of them we looked at comprehensively. Is there a thought as to what that would cost in terms of looking at all of these properties?
I haven't tried to gauge that, Mayor.
Let me try that one.
I don't know.
Obviously, I've looked at it, and I'm not sure what the intent, and I think that was '96 that was written, or whenever that was written way back, I'm not quite sure what the intent is. When you look at those, it is very easy staff-wise to find probably more than half of them, even more, that are obvious ones that you wouldn't give up. I mean, the end of Athen Street, which meets to the docks, the end of Hope Street that meets there, the end of Florida Avenue. I mean, some of these are so obvious as the right-of-way to the water. So I don't know if back in '96, when they looked at it, there's very few that is questioned. In fact, one of them on that list, Beach Drive, I believe, we all remember way back, I don't know, maybe 15 years ago, Beach Drive, and the issue about the homeowner didn't like people going through the side of his yard to a little piece on a beach that was not much of anything, but the commission upheld the right of the few citizens who walked down there, and they addressed Beach. So I'm not so sure staff could do those real fast to have them there, but again, one thing I can assure you of, that probably this location would be, just from that kind of report, a viable one, because there is something you can do to. The only case you'd knock something off of there is if it would have absolutely no use that we could give you there. And I don't think, you know, you could probably look at all of these, but, you know, I just don't understand why they put that in the value they place to how to do it, because, you know, you can put one category of 1A, and there's a bunch of them that are major water access areas that you're, you know, you wouldn't ever give up. So I'm not sure that would help you in this case, to do those, and, you know, it would probably be pretty easy and fast for the staff to do it, but again, sorry, you wouldn't know the circumstances that would come up for them when they came up. That's why, you know, I just don't know how to deal with that language now, since it wasn't done back when this was enacted. You know, I kind of don't know where to take it from now, but I really don't think it'd make a difference in this case.
To me is that, I bring it up, is that we're talking about, as I say, 20 years later, basically, nothing's been done. And I would just, you know, my assumption is 20 years later is that it was there because there was some thought that there should be further evaluation of the properties, that some could possibly come off of the list if it was looked at. And that's why, because right now, we're at a point, and even the applicant in his letter talks about viable and usable, and that's that type of subjective areas to, you know, what's viable and what's usable. And for me is that, you know, looking at, is it in the best interest of the citizens of Tarpon to not look at this as viable and usable because of the various dollars that could be expended to perhaps make some of the other areas that they could have as more viable and usable to them in terms of having that type of view for as the water's concern? So that's why I asked, and I also ask because when you have something in a document that's like the comprehensive plan, that you would think that at some point in time, we would be looking to do it, you know? You wouldn't want to be 20 years later saying, you know, that's still in there, because it will continually come up as other properties on the list if they ever do, because there might not be, and I don't know whether there's another parcel that will be similar to this, where there are some owners that's adjacent that's saying, hey, I would like for that to be vacated, you know? I don't know, because, you know, we haven't done that type of research on it. Those were just some questions that I had, just right off the top.
Mayor, as a planner, I can't disagree with your line of thought or reasoning. That's certainly understandable and maybe preferable that they be looked at comprehensively and all together, but I think Mark's point is well taken, and I can only relate to it in terms of my assessment of this right-of-way on Lake Boulevard. If I'd been asked to do that evaluation, my conclusion to you, my recommendation, would be that it is a viable, usable point of access to the shoreline that is important to the city. And if we just stop there, maybe I've complicated by suggesting an alternative, but I, you know, that's certainly our staff conclusion, just based on what we're given to work with.
I don't know, did you have a question?
No, I have to agree. I look at 23 properties here that are right-of-ways, that were part of the comprehensive plan, and since the study was never done, obviously, Mr. Stamos doesn't want to wait until the study is completed, but, you know, some are very obvious, like you mentioned, but this one to me is not, because it is in an industrial area, you know, close to a property that can be utilized for other reasons. So I also question that as being viable.
I understand. And that's the choice left to the commission. The terms are somewhat subjective, usable, viable, that all revolves around your knowledge and best judgment for this particular property.
And again, those things change. If you remember, 20 years ago, maybe it was viable for that road to be continued through there and go. You know, now, obviously, we have an ownership thing, it's obvious, it probably wouldn't be obvious for that road to ever be put through, but if it had been 20 years ago, there might have been some option of putting that right-of-way through for whatever was going to be on each side, but of course, that's something today that wouldn't be. So remember, those things do change and come up, you know, that viability does change, and the amount of viability does change over the years. So there are some things 20 years ago probably why it would have been more viable, but that doesn't exist right now with the ownership of the property.
All right. We still have some heavy lifting to do relative to the quasi-adjudicial process, so if there are questions for Mr. Healy, either from commission or from the applicant, this would be the time to raise them. I just, I think we're a little, the discussion portion is a bit premature at this point. Want to get through the evidentiary portion before we get to that juncture?
Question, Commissioner?
I do have a question.
I recognize, Commissioner, about-
I'm sorry. Are you sure? Okay. Just some questions, and you might have already stated this, and I appreciate all the work you've done on this project and the others here for us in the city. Has there been public objection to this at all? I assume this was noticed, and did we receive any letters or anything, or phone calls?
It was, and it was noticed, the mail notice. The advertising for the ordinance is before the second reading. There has been no feedback that I'm aware of, but maybe Steve or Karen can speak specifically to that. I'm not aware of any objection to the vacation.
And is there any precedence for us, and then, and I don't, my guess is no, that when, in a similar situation where someone's wanting to vacate this piece of property or this right-of-way, and because it's with a shoreline that we then suggested that they do, like we're doing this 40-foot between the Yacht Club and the Stamos property, have we done that before, previously? Is there any knowledge of that?
I haven't participated in any such recommendations. I'm not aware of one, no.
Okay. I just, I'm having just a hard time seeing where that's just a viable vista there, especially if there's no objection from the surrounding properties. Which was my main question, and the precedence of the moving the right-of-way down, but if there's no precedence and no objection, then my questions are answered. Thank you.
Bye, Mr. Healy.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Couple of questions. First of all, I'd like to say I appreciate Mr. Stamos and Ms. Martin's patience as we've gone through this process, because I know this has been kind of an ongoing process, and I know we've had turnover within our planning department, and it hasn't been easy for them to get the answers that they've been trying to seek, and I know they are both valued partners in our community, so I really do appreciate their patience. Couple of questions I want to get clarification on. First of all, in terms of the dollar figure, within the staff report or within the staff presentation, there was a mention of $159,558. But then, I also see, and it isn't clear to me, I guess this is from staff, but I guess this is staff's interpretation of the applicant's interpretation, which seems to indicate a total cost of $88,587, which would then be reduced by 50% for $42,293. I'm trying to understand all of the dollar figures that might be involved, and I fully understand that maybe none of the dollar figures matter, being that staff used this as a viable and usable access or vista to the waterfront, but nonetheless, I'm still trying to figure out all of the dollars and cents involved.
Commissioner, as best I can explain it quickly, the supplemental handout that you received was based on discussions that Mr. Stamos had today with the staff, and if we assumed the land value only for the Yacht Club, that $44,000 figure would be their portion of the fee as opposed to the $90,000, it would reduce it.
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
The handout that you have with the $44,000 would be based on, I think, the unit land cost value for the Yacht Club property only.
Only for the, okay.
Yes, sir. And as I-
So the other half would then be from the Stamos?
Yes, and my understanding is those values are computed on the land value, and so I don't know that there'd be a big change to that, although I don't know that the staff looked at that specifically.
But the total figure of $88,000 compared to $159,000 is different?
The-
This is looking at the Yacht Club, this is not looking at-
That's correct, Mayor.
The other part.
That's just looking at the Yacht Club.
The Yacht Club land and not the building. The first assessment of the, I think it was, what, ninety-some thousand?
Yes, sir.
Including the building-
Okay.
And everything, this is just the land.
That's correct.
Oh, I guess-
The other, I'm sorry, I wasn't done, if you don't mind, thank you. The other question I had is, as we look at the ordinance 216.01-A4, I'm just curious, over time, and I'm not sure if you've got the answer to this, or if the city manager or city attorney can chime in, but have we had other applications over time where we've utilized this ordinance and said, no, we're not able to approve of what you're asking? In particular, I know that we've had this list of, I guess, 23 or 24, whatever it is, situations that I guess we haven't studied and planned to study, so I'm just wondering what the history is of this ordinance.
Well, the ordinance hasn't changed. Those are the criteria, and to the extent there have been previous vacations that involved land-
Or previous applications for-
Applications for vacation, I'm sorry. They would have been reviewed, I presume, pursuant to these same criteria.
So have there been others?
I believe, but Beach Drive, when I mentioned, that was many, many years ago, and I believe there was one around Wickham Bayou that was turned down. I think they wanted a piece of city right-of-way for a dock or so, and we turned that down. Those are two, the Beach Drive one was a very contentious one, I remember that one. Those are the two that I can remember from the top of my head.
So my-
That was turned down, that was not allowed.
And I appreciate that. My follow-up question then would be directed to the city attorney. Are we compelled by previous precedent to act in a certain way, or is it not as simple as that? I guess I'm just looking for some direction.
Yeah, no, sir, you're not bound by anything that's happened previously. The, this application and your judgment based on the evidence that you'll receive tonight either meets the standards for review under 216.01, or it does not. Without respecting anything that's come before or will come after it.
And I can't really remember the Beach Drive, no more than there was some residents that was upset because the owners tried to block their access to that beach. I don't know whether that was being vacated or not, but that was the residents saying, hey, we want to utilize this, and somebody else was trying to just arbitrarily stop it, you know, which is a little different than what we have here. But I think that's our questions for Mr. Healy, I believe, at this time, yeah.
Okay. Does the applicant have any questions for Mr. Healy? All right. Before we get too far along, I do want to note that there are four criteria that Mr. Healy noted for review of vacations in 216.01-A1 through 4, and we've gotten into a little bit of a discussion about the application fee and what revenues are generated. The revenue generated or not generated or not part of your review criteria under the standards for review, so I just want to make that clear. At this time, we'll take presentation from the applicant.
George Stamos, 46 West Lemon Street, Tarpon Springs, Florida. I'm representing Stamos Family Partnership and also Seabot, who is Carol Martin's group that owns the Yacht Club. Thank you for allowing me to make a presentation to you and maybe giving you a little bit of alternative information that may help in your decision. And I do appreciate that there is a little bit of ambiguity, I guess, around, it's not really crystal clear by the ordinance itself on how you're to apply this, but there are some things that are in the comprehensive plan and in the ordinance that I think are worthy of consideration and should weigh into your decision, and if you don't mind, I'll go through those with you. First of all, Seabot would like to have the opportunity to expand their business and utilize the rights-of-way if they're vacated. They have had a plan in the past to utilize it for possibly adding a pool and some other facilities that would, you know, make their facility more in line with other yacht clubs and those types of facilities, and they couldn't do that in the past. And Stamos would like the opportunity to expand their boatyard, which, boat storage lot, which is already just to the east of this property, and that's what we would use the property for as well. The request to vacate both Bayou Boulevard and Lake Boulevard entirely, that's what our request is, and based on the circumstances, we feel that the board can vacate the right-of-ways in accordance with the provisions of the comprehensive plan and the standards for vacation, the ordinance. Elements of the comprehensive plan list the 23 rights-of-way in the city that may provide access to the city shoreline and that may be appropriate for public use. Lake Boulevard is listed on, as one of those 23. To determine the intent and the purpose of including the inventory of the 23 rights-of-way, the comprehensive plan and vacation ordinance has to be looked at in totality. In other words, you can't just look at any one paragraph or provision in there and just make a decision based on that. I think to get the intent of what was trying to be accomplished, you really need to look at the comprehensive plan provisions that deal with that and how the ordinance that followed, and what the, from that, try and glean the intent. So on page- So on page 41 of the coastal planning element, it lists the 23 rights-of-way. And it states, "These access points must eventually be categorized in terms of their appropriateness for public use." Further on in the coastal planning element, on page 96, in the goals and objectives and policies, it says, under objective 2.4, "We're to prioritize a city-owned rights-of-way access to the shoreline based on compatibility with the surrounding neighborhoods and the environmental characteristics, and categorize them for increased access or use based on the findings for all 23 rights-of-way." And policy 2.4.1, just a little further down in the same section, says, "Prohibit the vacating of all existing public rights-of-way, easements, and other dedications that provide access to the shoreline where increased accessibility is identified by the results of the study, referenced by the associated objective, and maintain public access to other access points such as bridges, catwalks, beaches, and so on." So that coastal element expounds on the intent more than any other element of the comprehensive plan. It's kind of given you a feel for what they were trying to accomplish at that point. So clearly, the intent was a look at the attributes and liabilities of the right-aways and determine which were appropriate for public access based on these factors. So let's look at how the subject right-of-way meets these objectives. And so just to repeat, what was actually called out in the element was compatibility with the surrounding neighborhoods, appropriateness for public use, and environmental characteristics. Those are the three specific attributes that were called out. I'm sure there's others to consider, but they were named in there. So compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. The surrounding neighborhood is predominantly residential. The property adjacent to the right-of-way is WD-1 on both sides, WD-2 on both sides. WD-2 allows for some fairly intense waterfront commercial uses such as boat building, boat repair, and marine salvage operations. Promoting a pedestrian access that is only 40-foot wide between these types of potential intense uses does not seem very compatible. Appropriateness for public use. As stated above, one has the question of creating a 40-foot corridor through the middle of potentially heavy marine-oriented enterprise would be inappropriate use of a right-of-way for public access. It just, it doesn't really seem to fit in. Environmental characteristics. The Lake Boulevard right-of-way abuts a substantial stand of mangroves at its terminus where the water's edge. The mangroves are 15 to 20 feet tall at the water's edge and extend into the water for about 30 feet. Beyond the mangroves is an oyster shoal that extends well into the water past the mangroves. Gaining a viable vista or water access seems somewhat unlikely. So just my personal comment on that is, anything can be permitted with enough time, money, and effort. However, the purpose of evaluating the 23 right-of-ways was to rank them based on consideration of the listed objectives. Common sense also would infer that additional consideration be given to public need for the additional access in the subject area of the right-of-way. Numerous viable existing public accesses to the water, i.e. bridges, bayous, launch ramps, et cetera, already exist in the area of the Lake Boulevard right-of-way. And the code of ordinances, standard for review of vacations, that is the legislation that was enacted to implement the vacation requests. This represents the interpretation of the comprehensive plan elements that addresses vacation requests. Section A of the ordinance gives the board the authority to determine if the standards for a vacation request have been met using four standards. The fourth standard asks for a determination if the applicant has demonstrated that the property to be vacated does not provide a viable usable, emphasis added, access or vista to the city shoreline. I added the emphasis. We believe that the existing mangroves stand an oyster shoal beyond the mangroves equates to the fact that the property does not have a viable access or vista. And that says "has," not "can have," or, but it doesn't have that. In the case of Lake Boulevard, there's two longstanding businesses that would like to have the opportunity to expand their operations. We're willing to pay the city for the right-of-way area to be vacated in accordance with a vacation ordinance. Both businesses provide valuable services to the residents of the city of Tarpon Springs. And we respectfully request your support by approving the vacation request. So that's our kind of viewpoint on some of those specific items in the comprehensive plan that specifically addressed these rights-of-way and how they were to be looked at and evaluated. We all realize at this point that the total evaluation of all 23 has not been done, but I think you can apply those criteria to these, those criteria to this right-of-way and probably come to that conclusion that, my conclusion it's not viable, and I think most people that are looking at it closely would probably come up with the same conclusion, compared to the other ones that could be developed, they're also named in that coastal element. I have some pictures, I think you've already seen them, but I'll hand them out anyway. Lake Boulevard right-of-way. And I think Dave pointed out, Mr. Healy pointed out, I think it was him, that the fees that would be generated by this vacation could also be used to purchase additional right-of-way. In fact, I think the ordinance pretty much requires that it be used for that. So if there was another viable right-of-way or one that could be purchased, then that's another option to use these funds for. Doesn't seem really like a great place to have a right-of-way where you're in between intense industrial uses. Questions?
I don't see any for you right now, Mr. Stammas.
What's that?
I don't see any questions that any of the commissioners have for you right now.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Any members of the public wishing to speak in support? Mr. Stammas, do you wish to make a closing statement of any kind? Staff, closing argument?
No, I don't have any questions. You know, I listen, I know Mr. Healy has made a point that, you know, in a sense, it's up to the commission to make a determination whether they feel that this meets all of the standards or not. I know the staff has recommended that this be denied, but, you know, one of the things that I continue to look at and I rouse with is the viability and the feasibility of the use of this property in terms of providing, what it says here is, providing the adjoining neighborhood with a viable usable access or vista to the city's shoreline. And I don't even think that, you know, having that 40-foot in there would do that for this property in concern, and there might be other properties that would provide a better view and vista to our residents than this one. But this is the time for us to discuss, our attorney said that we might have been discussing too much before, but this is the time for us to discuss and try to weigh out whether we feel like this meets the criteria that's established for its vacation of the right-of-way or not. So I don't know if anybody have any questions, discussions? Commissioner Tarpan?
Thank you. I don't have any more questions. I would just say that as we look at this particular application, I really feel like the Achilles tendon of it is whether or not it does in fact provide the neighborhood with viable use of the waterway. And my opinion is, it clearly doesn't for the reasons that have been said tonight and the reasons that were listed by Mr. Stammas. But I also feel like if it was the only accessible, or only place accessible to residents for water, then the residents would find a way to get to the water. But because it's surrounded by plenty of city-owned vistas or accesses to the water via Craig Park or other right-of-ways that deadend into the water, I feel like those are better utilized than those are being utilized. As you look at the list of the 23 right-of-ways that deadend into the water, I feel like this commission can probably look at most and say, "Okay, well, that makes sense. The Florida Avenue makes sense. That's a viable waterway. It's clear, people can get to it, you know, there's deep water." And there's other ones, Hope Street, Athens Street, and those are all viable and accessible, and they're being utilized. I also feel like even though it's not something that we would look at as a standard for review, I feel like the proceeds, if we were to approve this tonight, could be better utilized for acquiring additional right-of-way adjacent to some of those existing right-of-ways that do go down to the water for enhancement. So me personally, I don't have an issue approving this tonight. I think it's something that is within the purview of this commission, and I would move to approve this application as requested and as presented by the applicant. Thank you.
I'll listen about them. I'll second the motion if that's our time to do it. And I agree with Commissioner Terri Pannie. I don't think that the stipulations in point number four would lead us to actually deny this application, because there's been no public objection to it. I don't think, in my opinion, in just looking at the property, it is a reasonable vista and access and that somebody would use it. We've not seen any evidence that they're, I mean, I'm sure at some point it has been used, but that it is used regularly. And that goes back to, there's no public here speaking against that point. I believe there's plenty of access nearby, where they can, you know, have access to the water. And I also don't believe requiring the applicant to make the 40-foot, I guess, new right-of-way wouldn't make any sense at all. I wouldn't want to encourage access between two industrial, not complexes, but rather two different parcels. I don't think that would serve the community well when there's better places to access the water. And certainly, I don't think it would create, as far as a vista where that neighborhood would want to view that 40-foot wide part of the waterfront. And I also think, though, it might not technically be part of what we should consider, both these applicants, and if you consider the Yacht Club and the Stammas property, are in the business of increasing the use of that waterfront in some way or another. So to me, in my thinking, you know, that does take, you know, that does, you know, have some weight to it. It's not just, you know, a store trying to go in and going to block the waterfront, and it's not a use of the waterfront. Both these businesses use the waterfront for their business. So in my opinion, it is the best use of the land, and I'm in support of approving this tonight, and I do second the motion. Thank you.
I have no further questions at this time.
There was one thing that I did want to ask, I forgot. It was in the technical review, and it talked about permanent access. I'm not sure who had wrote that in for its technical review, but it had RF initials by it as far as for the boat with fire. Had that been discussed in terms of providing that?
Mayor, I believe it was a question posed by the Fire Department originally, back in August, about whether or not there was an opportunity in this location for their emergency boat to be stored or launched. There was some discussion with Mr. Stammas about accommodation for that, but that was not pursued, to my knowledge, to any definitive result.
Mr. Stammas, I would ask if that's a possibility of doing that? It just reads that if the city's open to vacating the right-of-way, I would request that a permanent slip be built for the city fire boat on the site of the marina, is what it's basically about.
Yeah, we're already letting the Fire Department use our launch facility, launch whenever they want to. We offered also to build an on-land storage facility for them if they would like to keep it there where they can launch it faster. You know, we were going to work out a deal with them to do that, a very reasonable deal for the city. But I think they're looking for someplace to hang it over the water, which we don't have available. We can't do that where we're at.
But you're willing to work with them in other ways?
Absolutely. And we already did, we already let them use the facility right now. We don't charge them anything, they have the code, they can come anytime they want, day or night.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Then roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terri Pannie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Next, we have item number 11, Resolution 2015-09, Application 1457, Keystone Ridge Estates, final subdivision plat.
Resolution 2015-09, a resolution of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving the final subdivision plat, application 14-57 for Keystone Ridge Estates, accepting all offers of dedication as described in said plat, authorizing the appropriate city officials to certify approval thereon, and providing for an effective date. It's Resolution 2015-09 by title only.
Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. Steve Carecchia, Planning and Zoning. This final plat is for a subdivision called Keystone Ridge Estates. Subdivision consists of 35 single-family lots on 11.6 acres. That property is located along Keystone Road, between the road and Lake Tarpon, and between Hillside Landing Drive and Sailfish Drive. The site plan came before the commission on October 1st, 2013, and that was approved with conditions. And at this time, all conditions of that site plan approval have been met. Staff has received all required subdivision documentation with this final plat. The final plat has been approved by the city surveyor and approved. Technical Review Committee has also reviewed this final plat and released it for consideration by the commission. With that, Mr. Mayor, Commission members, that concludes by part of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Seber? Do you want to entertain a motion?
With approval. Second.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terri Pannie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes, and 12 through 14 has been deferred. So item number 15 is, excuse me, Resolution 2015-10, Police Department Reorganization.
Resolution 2015-10, excuse me, chief. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing changes in the police department organization, including the revised title and pay grade of two positions, and providing for an effective date hereof. It's Resolution 2015-10 by title only.
Thank you, Mayor. This again is a part of some of the reorganizations that we've been working on citywide. This involves the two police captain positions. As I really look at these positions in consultation with the city manager, these two positions, they really are doing the work of what is deemed police majors, and that would be the rank above them. Obviously, they're required to be the acting chief in my absence. They're involved in everything from budgeting to information technology and a whole host of other issues that even involve endeavors outside of the police department. Obviously, we just did a union contract, we restructured some of the pay scales. There's also a little compression going on between, you know, their positions and those of lieutenant, which is frozen, and sergeants. I laid out in my memorandum to you all the reasons and justification why we think this is a very good move to improve the efficiencies and effectiveness of the police department. And with that said, we're looking for your support in this endeavor. Thank you.
Any questions for Chief?
I just want to say, I definitely support, I definitely support, 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 support this a lot. Having worked in a sheriff's office as a civilian, I know I've seen the work that our, that our, that our two captains have done, and it definitely is above and beyond that title that they have. And they need to have the appropriate title for when they travel. And also, there's the increase in pay, correct? And also, there's the increase in pay, correct?
Yes, 5%.
And I think that that's long overdue as well, from their, not had a raise in quite some time, so.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. And again, for the record, it's the renaming from captain to major. They would move from wage grade 26 to wage grade 27, which is a 5% raise.
Thank you.
And that would be effective on February 19th, this Thursday, coincide with the pay period.
So I have two days to remember to call a major.
You have to call me major from now on. You always call me captain.
Well, I will always remember you as captain. You never, you never did reach the rank of major.
I'll even be one grade lower then.
Do we have a motion?
Motion, motion, motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any public comments on this item? Senator roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry Paney?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Is that it yet? Yeah, name call, but. Number 16 is Resolution 2015-11, Fire Rescue Reorganization.
Resolution 2015-11, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing changes in the Tarpon Springs Fire Rescue Organization, including the revised pay grades for three positions and providing for an effective date hereof. It's Resolution 2015-11 by title only.
While Chief Butcher's calling up, I'm gonna have Bob Cochran begin the next two items since I had them look at me from my aspect, especially with the fire reorganization one in looking at aspects of after the settling of the contract with the Fire Department. This is something we thought necessary. So Bob, I'll have you start off with the rationale, and then if they have any questions, they can ask Chief Butcher.
Okay, thank you. As City Manager stated, we worked with Chief Butcher on this one. Again, he was looking for efficiencies in his department and looking to provide effectiveness. You know, they signed a fire contract, so these are basically more re-gratings. He's taken his captain-fire marshal from grade 24, 25. He's taking his district chief to be changed from grade 25B to grade 26, and a position of deputy fire chief will be changed from grade 26 to 27, and these will all result in a 5% raise and proper re-grading. And we overlooked this, and, you know, the fire chief brought this forward, and we think it's a very good move in the right direction. Again, not creating any kind of compression and pay these positions what they were.
And again, one of the major reasons for doing that is this puts it in line, again, these are all non-union employees, and to put them in line with what you approve for the union employees, obviously, we don't want to penalize people who are non-union. This will bring them up to par with those union employees and what you agreed there, and this will, we'll, we'll put them in the position, as we've had the chiefs look at it.
I think you guys said it all. It's just to eliminate some compression for our officers, for our leadership.
Did a great job of explaining that, Chief.
It was tough. Walk down here was a long way.
Any questions? Any public comments? Showed a little bit of motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry Paney?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. The next item is Resolution 2015-12, Cultural and Civic Services Reorganization.
Resolution 2015-12, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing changes in the Cultural and Civic Services Department organization, including revised job descriptions and creation of new job titles, and providing for an effective date hereof. It's Resolution 2015-12 by title only.
Are you gonna take that one to Chief?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Had the privilege to work with City Manager and Kathy Monahan in looking at, you know, some some reorganization in the Cultural and Civic Services Department. That department has been running a little shorthanded lately. They have some open positions, and some of them are key positions that really help bring forth the department's vision and mission. As we, as we look for these reorganizations, we outlined them, we outlined them in the memo to you, and one of the most important ones, who I call the number-two person, that we want to bring in, called the Arts and Marketing Programs Manager. And this is a really important position because this position will work directly under Kathy. This is a position that you envision will eventually, hopefully, if you decide to go from within, take over. If there's a retirement someday, or if, you know, the director moves on, these are the positions that you develop, you know, your future leadership from. We also looked at the new position of Arts and Culture Assistant. We looked at some title changes, senior clerk, title changes to the officer administrator. It's all laid out in the memo. We did some title changes and upgrades, and one of the neat things that we were able to do, and we have our finance department kinda back us up on this, is, you know, through basically eliminating some positions and adding and combining, this is only gonna cost about $3,000 to $5,000. I mean, what an investment, you know, for this department. But I think, I think the new org chart is very effective, very efficient. We kinda like that straight line, you know, with clear lines of authority on how the department's run. And Kathy Monahan did a lot of work on this. A lot of this, you know, was her input and, you know, and direction for the department. So we're asking for your support in this endeavor tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Monahan, you have any...
Well, again, I'd like to thank Chief Cochran for all his help, and has been through a number of reorganizations and extremely experienced in this. And, you know, we've gone through quite a few events this year, and we've got a fabulous group that are left in our staff that have really been saying, "We are a team, and we are moving forward." And this reorganization is gonna solve a lot of problems, such as meeting industry standards, a lot of cross-training that's built into the system, and something that is forward-looking and will take care of present issues as well. We want to make sure that we don't, we do not want to hear very much longer, "I can't believe Tarpon Springs has all these great arts activities." We want people to say, "Tarpon Springs, we expect this from you." So that's where we're going, with your help.
Thank you. Any questions? Showed a little bit of motion.
Motion to approve.
Move of approval. Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry Paney?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is miscellaneous. Item number 18, discussion, finalization of tree ordinance language.
Again, I'm bringing this before you tonight. I had thought I would be able to bring a first reading of the ordinance to you tonight, but I learned last week that, and confirmed, you know, Karen Lemmons was the one who found and brought it up to me, and, of course, I called our attorney, and he confirmed it, although I don't know if we've figured out why, but it is in the code that this has to go to the planning and zoning before it comes back to you. That's the way it's written. So what we're looking at is, I think, we've done some simple, good legal language to kinda meet the discussion that we had at the last meeting. Again, I wanted this commission to look at it and see if that's the language they want. And then if that's the case, we'll be going to the planning and zoning meeting the 16th. We'll turn around the next night, the 17th, for the first reading, and which will give us the opportunity to have this final and in place the first meeting of April. So, again, we wanted to bring this proposed language. This gives us the ability, the city attorney has wrote some language in there. I think that'll cover the situations that we had talked about, and it gives us the ability to use the pre-bank money to do those with, so it's not an effect on the general fund budget. Again, this is the language we've come up with, and before we start advertising and taking it through the process, we wanted to see if there was any changes that you wanted to make in that.
Thank you. I don't know if anyone has any questions or additional language feel comfortable. And there will be another opportunity after...
Three. There'll be three additional opportunities.
The planning and zoning does their thing, so. Not that we'll, like consensus, I guess, you wanna vote on the language.
After you go to the public, if this is the language consensus, we're gonna start advertising and go through the process of going through it.
All right. Any other public comments? Just remember that, you know, you don't have to tell us all everything tonight, 'cause you're gonna be able to tell the planning and zoning committee it all over again.
Hi, I'm Marcela Liberty, property owner at 229 South Spring Boulevard. I have a notice from the city arborist, basically asking me to remove one of the trees in the right-of-way. And my question to you people is, is there gonna be a letter, a follow-up letter, basically because this is in arbitration right now, or some kind of arbitration, is there gonna be a follow-up letter to say that's on hold?
Yes. When the, when the city commission approves this to go forward as it is, you'll be getting one that that will be held in abeyance until the final decision. Obviously, if the decision doesn't go through and is voted down, then you would get another one starting the process again. But as you can see, the anticipation is that you would, you would hold off on that, and you'll get formal notice that you'll hold on because it's going for an ordinance change. And, and if they vote, if they give consensus tonight to move forward with this, you know, we will advertise it, and again, you will get something that that'll be in abeyance until the final decision is made.
Okay, so the verbiage is gonna be out there in the public forum for us to review and...
Yes.
All right. All right, thank you.
Any other public comment?
I'm Kenneth J. Kikter, 211 South Spring Boulevard. And I appreciate, and the citizens and property owners of Tarpon Springs appreciate the commission bringing this issue back up and dealing with it. It was kind of an injustice that was done to the property owners and all of the property owners that are affected by this and the trees, and we appreciate it. A question comes up, is the verbiage there is about petition. Petition, the city manager, how will that be done? Is it by a phone call, or how do we anticipate dealing with that?
I would anticipate it'd be something in writing from you, asking for that.
By calling and reporting a tree, and then the arborist, arborist will go out?
We would tell you to, obviously, the arborist has to decide. You would, if the arborist said that the tree, you know, whatever reason is, you would, you would do a letter to us. The arborist determined, the different things on here, whether it's dead disease or in a condition that caused public safety or something. If that is, if that is written up in the term, then that's where you meet the criteria, and I would approve that to happen. Like everything else in the tree code, there's other sections that goes to myself. If there is a disagreement in one of my decisions, then I believe it's been throughout the tree code that the appeal to my decision would be to the Board of Adjustments. For instance, if the arborist came out and said it wasn't a danger, it wasn't dead, that sort of thing, I agreed with it, and the citizen wanted the appeal, just like it is now in the tree ordinance, that appeal would be to the Board of Adjustments. But that would just be if there was a disagreement in what staff and my final decision was. So there would be even another avenue that's presently in the tree ordinance, if there is a disagreement between the property owner and city manager staff.
Okay. The code doesn't say the city manager has to approve it, even though it's bad, the way I interpret it.
Are you talking about the proposed ordinance, the proposed language?
The way it's proposed, yes. It doesn't say has to. Is there any condition where you wouldn't approve the removal if it meets the criteria?
I don't, I don't see one if it meets the criteria. What the case could be is a citizen could petition, say he wanted to remove because of that. The arborist would go out and say it's not a dead tree, it's not a danger, and would disagree. The citizen would make his case to me why it would be, I would make a decision, and that would go. But if it meets those standards, it says right here, if those standards are demonstrated, then I would need to approve it.
I understand that. The other thing is, what if a new city manager, some point in time replaces you? Is he gonna be able to interpret this ordinance the way it's written?
I think he doesn't have a lot of choice.
And follow it the way it's written?
Yeah, I mean, I think anyone in Mark's position, whether it's Mark or somebody else, is going to need to rely on the expertise of their staff and be, and be compelled to and be required to make that administrative determination.
Okay.
And what I would even suggest, Mr. Kikter, is that during this period of time when it's gonna be with planning and zoning, and then back with us, is that if there is some language that would better serve the purpose, I don't think anybody is married to this, but we feel that right now that this would do it, but maybe there's some additional language that's in there that would clarify it for everybody, then there's gonna be an opportunity. I would assume that planning and zoning will add something to, so, you know, you'll have that opportunity to address those concerns with them, as well as with us, as we move forward.
And I'm just trying to ask some questions here and make sure we get this thing right to begin with, 'cause nobody's gonna want to revisit it again. And we have the opportunity to get it right, and, and that's the point I'm just trying to make.
Yeah, and I'm saying that you're gonna have a few opportunities to get it right, because it's gonna be going through the process.
Okay.
So through all those processes, hopefully, the final result will be one that you feel and everyone feel is gonna accomplish the purpose.
And just let me give you an example. On the other side, this is a case of a tree on a private property that they want to take down. We had a, we had a homeowner wanting to do it. The arborist went out there and disagreed that the tree was not dead and dying, going to. The, of course, there's criteria where I can judge and do it. When he came to me, I didn't agree with it, and I sent two other inspectors out. All three of them said, didn't agree with the homeowner. I didn't agree with the homeowner, and then his choice is to accept that or go to the Board of Adjustments. In that case, it was clear, and I even sent two additional ones besides the arborist to get two other opinions. So after three opinions, that's the only way I disapproved it, because I had three people saying that that wasn't true, and it would be the same circumstance under this one. So that's the same way it worked, as it's in that tree statute.
Okay, so my letter is on hold now, which is due for the 23rd?
If this passes your tree, and I believe the other gentleman's tree that was here, already has been established that it meets the criteria.
Thanks. Thank you.
It meets it right now. All of these is approval of this ordinance, and then I sign off on it, and they, those two definitely meet the criteria.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other public comments? Okay, we'll start advertising and moving it through the process. Yes, sir. That concludes our agenda. Madam Clerk, do you have anything?
No comments.
The city manager?
No, I don't think so.
Just as a result of this tree ordinance review, we did need to put it through planning and zoning, and I did, in reviewing that code, it turns out that every single amendment that this commission wishes to make to the entire land development code needs to go to planning and zoning. I would suggest to you that that process is inefficient and unnecessarily impregnates it beyond which it needs to be, pardon my inarful term. But, you know, planning and zoning boards typically are used to do plan review, plans under, you know, ordinances under chapter 163 and the like. I think that if, if I can get your permission to do so, I'd like to revise some of the language there, so that not every single ordinance like this that really doesn't concern necessarily planning and zoning functions needs to go through their, through their body. If no one has any objection. I know that government, we all know the government doesn't turn on a dime, but I think that some revision of the language might help us to be a bit more efficient in our processes and being responsive to the public.
No objections?
I don't know if I have an objection or not, but I, I think it is healthy for ordinances to go through as much due diligence as possible, including the planning and zoning board. But I hear the city attorney's concerns. I guess maybe I'd like to see, at some point, examples of the type of ordinance that doesn't, 'cause honestly, the one we're looking at tonight, I think it's okay for this to go through planning and zoning. I don't think that's a horrible thing. So I'd be curious to see an example of an ordinance that we should approve of as this board unilaterally without the advice of our planning board.
I'll be happy to do that. Maybe I'll give you some comparison, comparisons and contrasts with other cities, how they're utilizing their planning and zoning board.
Thank you.
And again, it'd just be brought back for you to consider, and yea or nay. But, again, this, I know this gentleman is waiting on the process, so... this, I know this gentleman is waiting on the process, so instead of two public hearings, it'd be three, just, you know, that's the way we want to do things, that's why it just, you know, takes a little more time to get there, so we'll bring it back and see what you think of it, and either go forward or continue as we are.
Major?
Steve, right, that would've been really bad for my self-esteem if you called me captain, but I have no, I have no further comments, thank you.
Commissioner Seber?
Well, I want to recognize you tonight, because I had the pleasure of going to the CAP Center benefits a couple of Sundays ago, and you received a standing ovation. I really enjoyed listening to some of the young people speak, and the two guest speakers that were servicemen, one was a master sergeant and another one a major, who came from Tarpon Springs and benefited from the CAP Center and saw you as a role model and a mentor, and I believe that having the CAP Center in Tarpon Springs is a benefit to our young people. And as a former guidance counselor, I've seen young people not able to get out of their circumstances and not have the help that they have here in Tarpon, so I appreciate you for that, and all you years of service.
Well, thank you for your kind comments. Commissioner?
I just said, I think you're a real nice guy, Mayor, that's all, that's about all I got.
Real nice, tonight?
Yes, sir. Mayor, could you just talk, or me, the chief and I mentioned, but the ceremony on Saturday and what the Little League did for us, and also Condic, I wonder, maybe you want to talk about it a little bit?
Well, the, the Little League decided that not only did they want to honor Officer Condic by presenting his family with a, a jersey that had his name on it and number one, but they also gave the chief a plaque for Officer Condic and his heroic efforts in terms of, of losing his life, but they dedicated the entire season to Officer Condic, and all of the individuals involved with Little League has decided to wear a patch on their uniform to, to remember him, which I thought was outstanding gesture and shows what type of, of community that we are. And I know there are many, many events that are still going on, talking to the chief, that are continuously raising funds on, on his family behalf and in memory of him, so I thought that was a great thing. And Officer Condic's father threw out the first pitch so I could save my arm and not embarrass myself by throwing the ball into the dirt, but I thought that was a great, a great opportunity that the Little League and all those associated with him, with the Little League to do that, so.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Also, we are, we are trying to keep up with our Facebook page on all these events. The Lightning did one on, on Sunday, so that's on there, the Little League is on there. So if you're interested, go to our Facebook page, we have all the photos and everything, and, you know, we're trying to recognize what everyone's doing. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
No comments, thank you.
Commissioner Banther?
No comments.
I don't have any comments, but it seems like that clock is getting smaller, though, you know? My eyes need to be checked or something, but it looks like it's eight twenty-three with during this meeting.
Twenty-three minutes, you're close.
That might be...
It's not, it wasn't for that, it'd be a whole different person.
You're close.
Very impressive.
You shook on that.
You shook on that.